Welcome to the May 12, 2022, meeting of the Town of Lake Luzerne zoning board of appeals. Would you all please rise and salute the flag?
I'd like to salute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call Matt Pallett.
Present.
Jamie Muller.
Present.
Burgess of it.
Present.
Rail Zubel.
Mike Bordeaux.
Present.
On this evening's agenda, we have four items, the public hearing 2022 AV dash two Francis Keen, 23 Lake Shore Road side yard setback variance. Second item is a new application 2022 AV dash three applicant Jenna Coolick Bowser and Tuck Architecture, owner Janine Sorville-Pastore, one Ivy Lane height variance for accessory structure. We have minutes to review from the April 14th meeting and then new and old business. And with that, Karen, would you read the notice for the public hearing?
Do you want to open the public hearing first?
Either way.
Either way, okay. Please take notice that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Lake Luzerne, the zoning board of appeals will conduct a public hearing on May 12, 2022 at 7:05 PM at the regularly scheduled meeting. The meeting will be held at the municipal complex 539 Lake Avenue, Town of Lake Luzerne, to hear comments on the following area variance 2022 AV dash two applicant owner Francis Keen, parcel number 298.16-1-64, Hamlet Residential Zone, HR, .48 acres, location 23 Lake Shore Road, Lake Luzerne. The applicant has applied for variance from the zoning board of appeals for relief from Article 5 A dimensional table of the zoning ordinance of Lake Luzerne requiring a side yard setback of a total of 30 feet. The proposed side yard setback is a total of 22 feet, 3 inches. He is asking for a variance of 7 feet, 9 inches. A copy of the application as well as other supporting documentation are on file with the office of the zoning officer and may be reviewed by interested members of the public during normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 1:30 PM. All parties in interest and citizens will be given an opportunity to be heard in respect to the proposed variance at the public hearing. Persons may respond by letter, appear in person, or by agent, or participate via Zoom. Access Zoom by computer at zoom.com or by phone 646-558-8656. The meeting access code for Zoom is 902-687-9764. Karen Putney, zoning officer, Town of Lake Luzerne, PO Box 370, 539 Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, New York, 12846-518-6962-711, extension 4, lake luzerne4@albany.twcbc.com, published May 2, 2022.
And with that, I will open the public hearing. Karen, do we have any letters from the county, from neighbors?
I did not receive any comments, any phone calls, any letters. However, I did receive two letters that I sent out back that the addresses, the time had expired to forward. So that was Lenore Kaufman, and I can't read the, um, Tribano is the other one. So those are the two that I got back, but I got no comments.
Thank you. I assume, once again, you are representing Francis Keen?
Yes, and for your records, my name is Paul, the principal of architecture here. Can I represent?
Would you please summarize the variance you're requesting?
Sure. So the house that's there is a seasonal residence that the Trent family and wife family alone for a number, many years, was a hunting camp that's been over the years, kind of changed into a seasonal camp. It's their intention to retire and move here full-time. They would like to go full-time residence here. The, the crux of the, of the variance is side yard setback. We understand that there's a total of 30 feet. We meet the 10 foot on both sides, but can't meet the 30 feet total.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the Zoom audience who has a comment?
No one.
No one in the present audience? I will close the public meeting. That being said, I would like to review the variance with the board. We just had the description of the history of the property and description of the proposed, proposed action. I'd like to go right to the variance standards questions. Question number one, describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Requested variance is moderate and the minimum side yard of 10 foot, 0 inches is provided on both sides of the proposed residence. I have been to the property. I don't see how the requested variance will alter the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I've been to the property myself and a couple doors down, there is a, it looks like a new build. So there's a lot of little camps in there too, but it's, the height is really kind of a mixed bag right now. There's been, which we've seen around a lot of places, everything's been getting updated in this mom and pop camp, the same, the same thing in the past. But the way it's going and growing, I don't see that how that's going to be any impact on the community.
I agree. Rail?
I took a look at the site. I think it'll be fine.
Mike?
Yes, I agree too.
Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than variance responses. We looked at turning the garage so that it was 90 degrees to the residence, but that would mean the garage doors would face the street directly, which may cause undesirable drainage issues and a side load garage at 90 degrees would interfere with the septic system. I agree that the side load could cause undesirable drain, or would interfere with the proposed septic systems. Not sure that the turning the garage, so with 90 degrees to the X, degrees to the residence would cause undesirable drainage issues, but that's my opinion.
Could you elaborate on that, Mr. Hall? On that place?
Yeah, I did hear it sort of, we need to keep the house down. We're trying to get everything going from the roadway and the salt standard. And it falls off, not, not super fast, but it drops relatively flat from the road out and then drop. But we're kind of trying to keep the garage, well, if you could, so when we're on the road or front setback is just a little bit. It's going to rain from the road towards the garage. And I think it will wind up with all of that root water winding up into the garage.
Yeah, because you got quite a, you have a kind of degree figured out what the rotation is on right now with the hall? Or I mean, it's rotated quite a bit. It's obviously not a 90, but you're probably right.
It's, yeah, it's more than 40 miles.
Yeah. And I, you know, what's the width of this garage called out? What's the depth of garage?
Yeah, I did, we're not, it's not a super big garage. We want a little space in front of the cars and they can.
Okay, I'm fine with that, thank you.
I find that, thank you. Rail?
I should answer it. Looks like you need to kind of copy it. Right through that.
Mike?
And I'm fine with that too.
Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial, release order is moderate, and then, and the minimum necessary. It's.
Any percentage that you figure out?
I don't need to figure it out. Is it reasonable based on the request? Probably is it substantial, in my opinion, based on what the requirements are, yes.
Mm-hmm, I agree. It's a substantial, but it's, it does lots of really tight and trying to shoehorn something in there. It's, unless you really stop chopping this thing up a lot, it's going to be difficult, so I'm okay.
Burgess?
Agreed, substantial, but I don't see, but I'll turn to.
Rail? Mike?
Oh, I agree. It's a little bit substantial, but I don't feel it'll affect the neighborhood.
Describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. The grants will not change the neighborhood and that there is a residence in the site now. New residents will improve the environmental character with the installation of a co-compliance to which disposal system. I agree that the requested variance will not change the neighborhood.
Yeah, I agree too with that. But Mr. Hall, just a question, and it probably doesn't even pertain to this, but with that, because I know you're right on the cliff, right down to the water and everything. Are they doing, are they proposing, are you doing anything for stormwater? Because I know you're concerned about the runoff and everything.
Yeah, we have, we have each branch that's proposed all the way around to capture everything that comes off from the roof so we can get it into the ground. And then everything that's out in front has been swaled so that the water stays back there and doesn't run out.
So you have all the possible, any kind of erosion just washing out the hill and take care. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
This is the question answered. Rail?
From the sounds, I think it's going to be better.
Thank you. Mike?
Questions answered.
Question five, describe whether requested grants is not a self-created difficulty. The request may be interpreted as self-created, however, offers it may minimize relief sought. I agree with the response.
It's a good answer. I agree. It's always all self-created.
Yeah. Burgess?
Has it answered honestly?
Rail? Mike?
Yep, I agree, good answer.
Anyone have any questions on the application on the board?
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to thank you for the details of the plan. That was very helpful with, with where that's called us. We're not used to that much. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Sitting on the board myself, I like nowhere to come. The napkins.
Yeah. Karen, we are seeker exempt, correct?
Correct, we are seeker exempt 617.5C16. And I do have the county referral here. I received that back and the county will concur with whatever the local zoning board of appeals decides.
And this is non-jurisdictional as far as the APA is concerned?
Well, we, correct, we have a letter in the file from APA, non-jurisdictional.
Okay. You have anything else? I make a motion to approve area variance 2022 AV dash two Francis Keen, 23 Lake Shore Road side yard setback variance, parcel number 298.16-1-64.
I'll second that. James Muller seconds it.
Got it. Okay, Matt?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Rail?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? So it's, you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When you, when you get ready to build, I need three sets of construction drawings. I'll keep one to go to the county from there. Have you got my packet, application packet for the land use and the county application? Yeah. It, no, I can email it to you. Okay, I'll make a note, yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is new application 2022 AV dash three applicant Jenna Colick Bowser and Tuck Architect, owner Janine Sorville-Pastore, one Ivy Lane height variance for accessory structure, parcel number 285.20-1-59.96 acres, Hamlet Residential Zone. Who is representing? Let's move up to the microphone.
Give me one second, Matt, before you start. Okay, I'm set.
You are?
Um, yeah, there's no one on Zoom, no, but.
No, nobody other than us.
Okay. Well, yeah, because if they're going to do it, if they, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, while he's setting up the camera, could you please summarize the variance request? You need to speak closer to the microphone, bring the microphone closer to you.
We are speaking, hey, there is a defect to us.
While he's setting that up. Did I, did I copy for you guys the secret form and put it in your packet? It'll be behind the application. I'm not sure that I did.
No, I did not have a secret form.
All right. Why don't I give, Matt, I'm going to give you this one. I didn't, I'm surprised I didn't do it. Here's the secret form. And we did receive back the Adirondack Park letter already, and it's non-jurisdictional. Somewhere. I do not have the county back yet, apparently. It's in the process. County. Okay.
Secret form for the application.
Thank you.
I'll be going to the application review. The H1 is consistent with the information which is provided. Yeah, but then is the architect, the owner is Janine Sorville-Pastore. And everything else is, see attached, so. Brief history of the property, the property's been owned by the family of Janine Sorville-Pastore since the mid-'40s. She personally became the owner of the property about August 2007, 2016. It deteriorating 1800 square foot, one-story seasonal camp was demolished and is placed at 3,000 square foot, two-story residence was constructed and created in 2017. Her was actions is to build a plus or minus 450 square foot addition to the main residence to function as an art studio. This addition will not require any variances from the zoning board. The project is also proposing a attached two-car garage. Garage is to be plus or minus 175 square feet and will have a height of 21.5 feet, 5 inches as measured from the lowest point of the surrounding grade to the highest point of the structure. A height variance of 3 feet, 5 inches has been requested for the standard 18-foot height limit of expression accessory structures to a primary residence. In response to question number one, on the variant standards, describe how the requested grants will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. The response is requested variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood or adjacent properties due to the limited visibility of the detached garage. There's a tree buffer between this property and those that surround it as well as the road adjacent to the property. The garage is also set into a hill on the property and the full height of the structure is only visible when viewed from the southeast, which would mean the viewer was standing on the driveway, which is private property. At the neighboring property to the west, the only private property now in cover view of the garage, but to get a glimpse of the structure through the tree line buffer, they would only see 14 feet, 9 inches of the structure as evidenced in the proposed northwest elevation drawing included with this application. I would say that question's answered.
I, James Muller, going to recuse myself from this application.
Burgess?
Questions answered.
Rail?
Questions.
Mike?
Questions answered.
Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than the variance. In order to limit the height of the garage, we explored what the most possible ceiling height for the garage could be, that would not limit the functionality of the space. We set up at 8 feet, 6 inches, which is quite modest for a garage. The purpose is storing cars while maintaining the ability to pull a car with a roof rack into the garage. Using this height as a baseline, we did explore what the garage would look like if it was forced to perform to the 18-foot height limit. Result is a very squat-looking garage, did not sit in with the architectural aesthetic of the existing home on the site. The property would appear to be much more cohesive with the main house and accessory structure had complementing roof forms achieved by having the same pitch. After matching the roof pitch found on the main house, 12-on-12, the peak on the attached roof, garage roof extends the height of 3 feet, 5 inches taller than the allowable height of 18 feet, 0 inches. We considered creating a site with cohesive structures to be an important design principle. The owners would also like to maintain some usable space in the garage attic for storage when the structure was forced to be under the 18-foot height. The resulting storage area was extremely limited. This was minimal area that a person could walk into before needing to duck. It is not realistic to carry heavy guidance for storage into a space that you need duct to access. Questions answered.
Agreed.
Questions answered. Questions answered.
Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial. The request could be considered substantial in that we are asking for 3 foot, 5 inch variance on an 18-foot limit. However, if this garage were attached to the main residence, constructed as an addition, the height limit would have to have been 38 feet. We see the detached option as a beneficial alternative due to the fact that there is less site disturbance required to build a detached garage in this location as opposed to garage with the hallway attachment to the main residence. I'll let Mike go first this time.
Questions answered.
Rail?
Here we go.
I agree. Questions answered. Question four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. The height difference of 3 feet, 5 inches will not have any known adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Additionally, the garage be located in a position so that minimal vegetation will be harmed in the excavation of the garage foundation. We have noted the existing locations of large trees or the root systems can be avoided. An important goal of this project is to minimize impact on the neighborhood and the environment. Rail?
Very good.
Burgess?
Questions answered.
Mike?
Questions answered.
Questions answered. Question number five, describe how the requested grants is not a self-created difficulty. The variance we are requesting is due to desire to have new garage matched to the architect, architectural aesthetic of the existing main residence. This could be considered a self-created difficulty. However, it is reasonable that the property owner would want to fill the garage, a structure that matches its built surroundings to maintain a cohesive language among buildings across the site, considering the investment she is making in her property. Question is answered.
I agree.
Rail? Mike?
Questions answered.
Anyone on the board have any other questions?
No, sir.
Very nice application, you answered a lot of questions that, you know, you put something perspective that we wanted really think, I just wanted to save the job.
Motion to accept the application. My second.
That was Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, I'm all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
And Jamie, you.
I'm with you, yes.
Motion to establish a public hearing on June 9, 2022 at 7:05 PM for area variance 2022 AV dash three applicant Jenna Colick Bowser and Tuck Architecture, owner Janine Sorville-Pastore, one Ivy Lane height variance for an accessory structure, parcel number 285.20-1-59.96 acres, Hamlet Residential.
I'd like a second then.
All in favor?
I.
Right. Hi.
Opposed? Carrie? So we're just set to come back on the, on June 9 at 7:05, okay?
Next on, the agenda is the minutes of the April 14th meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes, I have.
Yes.
No problems.
Yes, I for beautiful problems.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
I.
I don't know who's second is, but.
Brad.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Carrie?
Under new business, I may be absent for the next two meetings. Next meeting, I hopefully will be finally taking a vacation. Yeah, well, one that was, one that's been paid for since, since, since 2020.
Oh, I got two of them.
Yeah. Um, that is the June meeting and right as it currently stands right now, the July meeting, I will be, I will be in New York City carrying my daughter post-surgery. So that is, the June is still up in the air because the surgery day can change. I do not, unless something drastic happens, the, the June date is, is should be pretty set, the July is questionable. So right now, I need someone to volunteer to be, to chair the June meeting unless they hear otherwise from me.
Well, I can't chair because I recuse myself, that's correct, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, you could still chair and then you have to recuse yourself and there'd have to be supplemental chairs, it'd just be easier if you. Yeah, it was exactly very difficult. I've chaired before, it'd be very difficult to chair and I.
For all.
Well, the only next, next person in line would be Amy.
Right.
I, I think we may have to talk to Rob because I don't want to speak for Annie, but I know in the past she was just definitely not interested in sharing.
This is true. And also she wasn't here for.
Well, can't they pick the chair of the night of the meeting?
Can.
Okay. Can they set it, can they make that decision, right?
We just give Andy the rights to, it's kind of a technical order. I'll be more than glad to help whoever's doing it, so.
We all work together anyway, so.
And then I can always do July, so. But we, again, we can adjust that.
Well, I'll let you know about July, for sure.
I can be missed one in the summer anyway, but I'll be your June, July.
Okay. And new business?
I have no other new business.
Anything new coming down the pipe there, Karen?
Um, no, they interviewed again tonight for the deputy's zoning position. We now have two, two applicants that turned in an actual application and we got an interest by email for a third person, but we don't have an application, but we have an interest by email. I don't know if they're going to interview for that person or not. We don't have an application, but we have an interest by email, I don't know if they're going to interview for that person or not. But hopefully by the next board meeting, I'm hoping they will have made a decision. And then that person will be doing the minutes for our meetings.
Are they still making the signs to put in the town that state like zoning?
They are in the process of being made, I've had them into to the county now for a couple of, you know, for a bit. Yeah, I had I had contacted them originally, when I first contacted them, I talked with Kevin Heyos. And he was the highway superintendent or out of DPW there. And he said that he thought that they should be the regulatory signs which were white with the red line around them. And then when the actual person that got the work order got that got the work order. He called me and he said, I don't think we want to do it that way, he said. And we talked about it and they're going to end up being the same brown and gold as a lot of the other signs around town to keep in with. It's it's kind of an APA thing, they try to stay within APA's guidelines for signs and that's. Why it's done that way.
I drove out to Utica, I noticed all along the way, like every little town had signs, I just had something I picked up when I drove.
Yeah, I've been noticing it too.
I didn't see any kind of anything with any of the signs, like every one, like somewhere on wood, somewhere blue, somewhere red.
Yeah. Well, they are being made, they're they're being made now, what?
I like to sign this on your webpage.
Oh.
It may not be in keeping with APA requirements, but it's nice for working.
Well, you can thank Jamie Crant for that, she did that, so. So that's all I have for new right now.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have old this? He did new business, no, not in our world.
Can I ask? But update. Charlotte.
Yes, they came, they had their application to me. Like, I didn't work Friday after the meeting, Monday morning it was in my mail email and they had sent priority mail checks and they. So it's been taken, they gave enough for me to issue the permits and they were issued with the condition that. The principal building has to be sealed within one year and they went on to the county from there, now I don't haven't heard. I know from the building inspector from the county that the plans were not sufficient for them, which is what. We had figured anyway, but that's their issue, not mine.
That wouldn't even be sufficient for us because they had a corrective violation before they could apply is what we said when we left here. If a permit solved that, we never needed a public meeting, we never need any of that.
Right, and so what that was the discussion here that night and in the end. I was, I was told to handle it as a violation, which was a letter that was supposed to go out stating you're in violation, you you've got two weeks to get. You know, to remove the buildings or bring this property into compliance. So they, before I could get that letter done, they had brought the property, the situation under compliance by applying for the permits. And you're right, that's what was my whole principle that our. Question that night was. It was like a round robin, what was the sense of going through the variance if this was going, if just getting the permit was going to take care of it, so.
They don't have approved. Building permits from the county, so they can't get that.
They they have applied to them and they are telling them to get more, to get engineered plans. I have done my part, I have signed off on the drawings that they gave to me, which are sufficient for what I need to approve here at the town. Now they have gone on to the county, the county to my knowledge has not yet issued their permit there. Because they are waiting for the construction, complete construction drawings on the house.
Your understanding is that within a year they have a C O then they are good.
Yep.
But that's not what we determined at our last meeting, we had two weeks to fix the violation, then they could follow the process. They're still in violation.
Well, they have their permits now for those storage buildings, so that was the violation.
They have to remove them within two weeks, which is two weeks ago, then come and file a permit, is what we told them the night we were here.
Is that what you understood?
And our minutes reflected they had to remove them within two weeks.
I think it was. Ordinarily follow the notice of violation. And I think. Don't recall specifically, but I think it was to clear the violation. Before there would be. A permit, so in order to make a permit. The violation would be cleared.
Thank you.
So a violation has to be cleared in order.
So now, do I need to tell them they've got to remove them?
We told them that night and it's in our, it's our minutes.
Yeah.
We told them that night they had two weeks.
Mr. Charlotte's question was, what am I supposed to do with the buildings? And I tell you, I remember my response very specifically.
Yeah, I have that on on the record, I mean, it's.
If a permit fixed it, we didn't even need to have meetings, they could have come filled out those half things that they did, whatever you guys call them.
So those garages haven't been moved yet?
No.
No.
So they had two weeks from the last meeting to move them. And it's passed two weeks.
But I didn't send them the violation letter because they had gotten their application to me before I even came back to work from that meeting.
It doesn't matter, they did not have it to us at the meeting. We are the zoning board of appeals, we make the decisions and you follow up with them. It might be a tough job, it might suck.
I I told you that night, I had no problem with whatever decision that you made, but I, when I left here. I thought that that my direction was to write them a violation letter, give them two weeks to. Bring the property into compliance and get the permits. So they got the permits and the property was in compliance at that point.
In order to bring it into compliance, the sheds get moved.
Yeah, then they apply for the permits.
We can't be like picking and choosing, it makes the town look.
What do you want?
The council advised. Them right there, deny the property in violation, the owners must bring in compliance within two weeks or or remove structures, they cannot make it. In compliance because they already had the violation.
They can, before they apply for the permit.
They have to fix the current violation.
The way, or this is the way I had it written in, is that. That last sentence in the minutes is. Further discussion between attorney Crowe and Z E O Putney regarding how to move forward. Council advised to send violation letter that as the variance was denied, the property was in violation, the owners must bring the property into compliance. Within two weeks or remove structures, so they brought it into compliance by getting those permits, it's the way I looked at it at that point.
I I don't, I don't think so, I think the permit that they would need for not to be in violation would be a variance. To have two accessory structures without a principal structure. Their their permit is essentially a building permit to place them.
Correct.
So. I don't believe that just. The after the fact.
All right, so how do you want me to handle this? Do I make them take the buildings off for one day now and put them back on?
I think they would have to take them off until they would, till they get the permit.
They have the permits for the storage buildings and the house now.
You can issue them without stuff from the county?
Yes, I I have to issue first before the county will issue.
And I guess you probably shouldn't have issued those permits. Their directive was to remove the buildings, there's no thinking, guessing, wandering, pondering. It's remove the buildings, that's. Isn't it red and red, black, white?
Or remove the buildings, it says, but remove structures.
And he laughed, I'm sure, I mean, he asked, what am I supposed to do?
It's such a slap in the face for those people that come and get variances and try and do it right. For people that come and do this.
I agree with you.
It's it's just very, and I know it because I personally went through it when I had chickens, I was held right to the team. I mean, I was held at the Rynstone, that one, there was like zero give. There shouldn't be any give with this either, was D E C notified about the septic system up there?
D E C has nothing to do with the septic system.
Park agency.
They got a jurisdictional letter from the Adirondack Park Agency that was a non jurisdictional.
They have, they have a permit to bury a dry well up there, dumb shit in it.
They haven't done, put anything in it according to them, I haven't had them open it. I know.
Is that the board of health Karen would have jurisdiction for that?
No, I have, I am the one that has jurisdiction for the septic.
So three or the last meeting, you were notified that there's an illegal tank buried in the ground up there. And nothing's really been done.
Well, they're going to use that when they put in the system for the house.
Dry wells are against the law, now you can't bury a dry well, can you?
You can, there's there, you if you can't put in a trench, which they're going to remove it anyway, they said they're going to remove it. That they were, they're, they, I think they applied for a, an absorption field system anyway. They're going to put in a whole new system.
There hasn't even been a per test up there, so we don't.
You don't have a sub, you need a septic tank and then. So they don't have any permit for a septic system at all, right?
I don't know, I don't recall right now off the top of my head if I issued the septic permit. With the house permit or not, because typically people don't always get the septic permit. At the time they get the house permit because the septic permit is only good for six months and the house permit. Is the zoning compliance for the house is good for two years, the septic is only. Six months and a lot of times they don't put the septic in until the actual foundation is in place for the house. Because there's so much running over the property and stuff, they don't want to be running over the septic system while they're building the house.
Correct, didn't he say that that was already there?
Yeah. But I watched Zoom again before I came and she said, I don't have any record of them being there, so you called them out on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I watched.
So he was played dumb and said that was.
I don't want to open up a can of worms, I watched that game before I came over there, that's why this this is not very good because people study it. And it was very clear when we left here that he could not get a permit when until.
So moving forward, what does Karen have to do then, she has to revoke that permit and say they have to remove those into the permits or issue? And start over again?
No, I don't think that she would, I I think that. I think the the underlying issue here is that. The code is. Vague and it's kind of circular and I think the real fix is we probably have to. Note the issue that we're having. With how this is an unclear process and work on fixing the code. I I do think that at the time that the. Permit was issued. The property wasn't in compliance and so. The permits shouldn't have been issued, but the fact that they were issued. I I would say would give.
I have another, I have another similar situation of another property that has a storage building on it with no principal building that was put up. I believe last summer. And after we had this variance hearing, it was, I was questioning how. And I have sent this person emails about the violation and. Nothing has been done yet. And I was thinking after this variance and I actually had Jamie go up with me and measure this, the height of this building that exists. That, how am I going to handle this because? The way this one was handled. In the end, to me, it even seemed like it was, why did we do this? Because the end result was they just got their permit and okay. So you're right, Rail, to question me about it, I should have. Obviously done it differently, but I have this other one coming up and what I had decided was. That I was going to. I had sent this person emails. And I now am going to send an actual violation letter and I may have already sent one, but I'm following up with a second one. And telling her that the property is in violation, you need to bring the property into. Not bring it into compliance with our ordinance. Or file for a variance to, for whatever it is that she needs because it's the same situation. There's a house and a storage building on one parcel and on a separate parcels, they put up this big. Metal storage building that actually we determined it was. The height is is eighteen feet, just about eighteen feet, but it's higher than. The principal building that is on the other parcel because they were talking about combining the two parcels. So that it wouldn't be in violation, but it still is in violation, height violation because it's not supposed to exceed. The height of the principal building and the principal building is a double wide manufactured home and it's lower than this building. So anyway, I I had been thinking about what to do with it because it's a very similar situation and as a result of what happened with this one, it was like. How do I handle this better differently to make it, you know, to make it. Logical, I guess is the word I want, so. I messed up and I'm sorry. I thought from the discussion that we had that I was to send them. A violation letter to tell them to bring the property into compliance or remove the structures. And they brought the property into compliance, so that's my error and I'm sorry.
Like I said, I think the real fix here is we've got to.
Reword that somehow, fix it.
Code's got to get fixed, but also I think, you know, as it's kind of a general rule of thumb is. In terms of. Permits and granting permits, it's, you know, usually if there's an already an outstanding violation on the property. That's got to come into and that's got to get fixed first or come into compliance or any. New approvals or permits. Are granted.
Right.
And so, yeah, even though it may have been. Kind of a fool's errand or silly, they'd have to. Take the structures off or disassemble them. You know, whatever they choose to do to get in compliance, hook it up to a helicopter, lift it off the property. File for the permit. Set it back down. But. You know. Clearing the violation first before that permit allowing it would be granted.
So essence Karen has to put a hold quote on that permit until it just.
Well, he's saying we should probably let this one go through.
Yeah.
And fix the process in the future.
Yeah, I don't think you could go back and now make them reapply.
Why not? We made an error, clerical error. And you're setting precedent, with the next one coming down the pipe, I'm going to represent them, I'm going to say the same thing as wait a minute, you just did it on. One ninety-six, you let them get a permit afterwards.
That's not, that's not. Setting precedent from the, I guess, the discretionary aspect of the Z E O. The board didn't set the precedent.
Resorting office is going to set a procedural precedent.
Yeah, we set a precedent because what we said.
But the but the board, the board sets precedent and so the the motion that you made and the decision that you made. Set a binding precedent going forward.
Not if it didn't, it's like throwing at the wall and not sticking. We look like a weak board, all somebody has to do is come in, get loud, get mouthy with us. And it seems to go away or something, or we're always going to fix it on the next one, the next one.
Well, she's down and coming that says, you know, he has a building without a primary resident. And right now, we're going to come and move it, then buy for the permit.
Like that dock down on the river, some some of the stuff we do, we set some precedents here where. Frustrating. Especially when you've lived here your whole life and you try and do everything right and you're held to the T. And everybody else can come do whatever they want. It's just sad.
We don't, if you don't make the next person move it, don't they have? Something say. Your your procedure is you didn't make the people on potash.
No.
Six months ago, it was okay for them to do, but not us.
I I think it's, I think it's different, the Z E O has. A certain standard and discretion involved in it. It's not setting precedent like this board sense, and so there's some some differentiation in that. I think what you did with that decision does set precedent going forward. And how it is enforced and complied with. There is some discretion with that, but that's. Uh, there is some discretion with that, but um, that's, that's a step that has to, you know, the follow through has to come with, with that step, so. I don't know if that necessarily. Answers the question. But you, your precedent wasn't changed as a result.
Our actions did not change, just the way we handled it.
Right.
So the precedent or the issue may be with the Z E O, not us.
Enforcement.
Enforcement.
So why can't you say it was clerk error and, you know?
There was a misunderstanding of some sort.
Just like that last variance, we did up on Lake Tor Road for height variance where Al Sayheim, the last C E O. Z E O gave a bad variance. We made them come back in and reapply. Remember that? Up on Lake Tor Road, up, go past Redwood Road, there's a big barn. They built, you know what I'm talking about, Jamie?
Yeah, he didn't give them a variance. He just gave them a permit to build.
Him a permit and we said the zone and C E O did wrong and we made him come back in. And reapply, didn't we? We made him spend.
He came, he came, he had to file for a variance, yes, because the county wouldn't C O it because the. It was, the height was too much.
So there's proof that accidents can be made and then they have to be revisited. And that was an accident made and that was an accident revisited. You're human, Karen. We all make accidents. I give you a lot of credit for sitting down there saying you screwed up. That takes a lot and I respect you for that.
Well, I, I misunderstood what I was directed to do in a way, but. I agree with you that, that. It, it was like going through that process was for nothing in the end.
Right.
Because it was fixed by just getting the permits.
Right, but I think that was the point is that it should have been fixed by just getting the permits.
Right, I, right. I agree with that now, but I unfortunately have.
We might not have the authority to tell her to do it, but it is the will of the least two of us that they remove them and reapply.
And I'm not saying this to be sarcastic. You've made your point and I agree with your point, okay? And so going forward, that's what would happen. If, if another one comes up for a variance. And you don't, and, and it doesn't get approved. Then they, my position would be at that point that you remove them and then come and get your permit. Based on this experience, that's what I would do.
So in essence with this guy, we have to just wait a year. And watch him fall on his sword again because he's not going to build his house. And then we're going to make a move.
Well, he, he supposedly will come back and appeal.
He'll ask for another.
For another year and then you have to make that decision. Well, you shouldn't say that. Without hearing the appeal. You shouldn't remake your decision without hearing the appeal. But.
Right.
I think he had electrical issues up there too, but that's, the S I U is a. That's that, you don't.
No, that's county.
Yeah, he's got electrical issues too.
So that one just slides through?
It looks like it and I'm sorry.
We just have to be prepared when people come at us. Because if I was a resident and that and stuff happened, oh. I, I had a shed on my vacant piece of property and I knew it was wrong and I paid a thousand dollars to get it moved. Because I knew it was wrong. I did that and these people don't have to.
And, and the gentleman even said, what do I have to move? Just across the road, go get a permit and put them back. It was his intention, movies. And the only reason I brought it up is because his neighbor, of course, what are the, it's one of these sheds. I said, oh, we're going to be gone in two weeks. Don't worry about it. Now I'm going to go tomorrow. I'm going to hear it again. Oh, we can't make them.
Well, you can tell them that I screwed up, that I misunderstood the direction. Hey. Seriously.
I'd never do that. Yeah.
I have, I'm, I'm, can make mistakes as much as anyone else, so.
But nothing, just saying legally, we can't go back.
Could we ask for?
Well, yeah, and I would say the board can't. So you, you don't have enforcement authority. And you can't direct Karen, you are going to go revoke that permit.
Basically, they denied the variance and that was, they could. In denying the variance, do they have the right to say, remove the structures?
In denying the variance, they don't have the approval to have both structures there, so the property's. In violation of the code. And therefore, um. Any type of permit for the property. Shouldn't be entertained.
Until that violation is taken care of.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Right, and so even if it was. Pulling the uh, sheds across the street or, you know, whatever it would take, put them on a truck and, and driving out. Put the permit uh, application in and then bring them back in. Like I said, even though that, you know, may sound um, ridiculous. That's what it would take to clear the violation, to make the permit process. Uh, is clean. To clear the violation first, get the, the permit, put them back.
Okay.
If the variance was granted, no, they could leave them there and then get the permit.
Okay.
And like I said. I would suggest, you know, either we, we sit down at some point or um, put a note so that when we're going through review of the code. We can address this section. And fix the process that, you know, has the potential to lead to this kind of circular.
Okay.
Issue.
Alright.
His permits were issued though, then he said two days after. So he has a year. From that.
Yeah, I think they were issued on the Monday or the, I think the Monday.
Or, yeah.
When I came back.
Somewhere in the little third week in April. We'll be back here in April, next year doing this.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's nothing's moved except, well, those guys up there looking under the sheds is why I thought they were being moved. Yeah, they haven't been up there.
They haven't moved an inch on that property.
But a guy.
A lot several times.
You know, you, the lady you know, mentioned, but the guy, the guys who were up there and they were looking under the shed. Was it you? No, you're an inspector. Guys up there, but look, they're moving.
Yeah.
They've been there. They were there for all weekend.
I've been through there every weekend and every weekend they're there.
Yeah. I meant those, the gentleman where they're all weekend. Using them.
Do they, do they act, do they actually in season bring an RV up there and park that they do?
There was an RV up there during the summer. I am.
Is the, is the, is the, is the black water line tied into anything? I know it's, it's not, it's not the zoning board of appeals area of jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's what the pad is. I don't know, I guess you could build a house in. A year, right? But.
Yeah, you can.
Well, that ledge in winter coming?
Yeah. Always can do it in itself, I thought, so.
Yeah.
He was selling it himself.
I watched on YouTube.
I was all set before.
Sorry. Solid point.
Oh, God, it was, it was, uh, it was educational, if nothing else. Frustrating.
I'll go back to my motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.